All right, it's thirteen hundred. I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First thing, uh, should we have an approval of the agenda?
Uh, I've got a few things I'd like to strike and a couple to add, please. Uh, strike number two on old business. Uh, strike number four, old business. And add a number eighteen on new business for Rev. Duck Wayfinding Times. And, uh, number nineteen is, uh, approved allocation to Grand County Festivals. Festivals and Music on the Square, which is nine thousand dollars. Both are sponsored events by the town.
What was eighteen?
Uh, Rev. Duck Wayfinding Times. And I'd like to move number eighteen up to number three underneath new business. Just so Mr. John here won't have to set through.
Mr. John, is that me?
Yeah. Mr. John.
What was nineteen?
Nineteen was, uh, allocation of funds that's in the budget.
So Rev. Duck's gonna be from number three?
Well, we'll do one, two, eighteen, and three.
Oh, okay.
Allocation of funds for what?
Uh, music on the square and, uh, just festivals in general.
Okay.
It's a yearly allocation.
Are you tabling number two and four or removing it from the agenda on the old business?
Removing it.
From the agenda and not bring it back next week, Mom?
If we strike it, it's done. If we tag it, it comes back.
Okay. Now, if you have a second?
A second.
Name this one. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the, uh, regular board meeting, April sixth, two thousand twenty-two.
Hmm, rather extensive, too. Motion to approve April sixth, uh, regular board man- meeting minutes.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
All right. All right, next, uh, the minutes for the special board meeting, uh, April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
Unanimous.
All right. This time, we need a motion to open up public comment. Oh, this is just a open, okay, well, I'll open up public comment this time. We have anybody for public comment? I'll, uh, ask for a motion to close public comment.
Motion.
Say.
Unanimous.
Okay, the first thing on the old business, um, is the water line at the, uh, softball field at the high school.
And, go ahead.
And, uh, talk with Chad and it is completed. And, uh, number three on the old business is the, uh, elder branch survey. And that has been completed. And, uh, that's preliminary map I've had on the table. Everybody got a chance to look at it, but he's putting the finish and touches on the official map and everything. Should be in the next few days. All right, and, uh, number five is the fence repair quote. We've got a couple of quotes here. The first one is to repair the, uh, the fence down at the, uh, old sewer plant. And it was for two thousand four hundred and forty dollars and seventy-four cents. But the person that hit it, it agreed to, to pay for that.
Has anybody reached out to him? Cause I think it would be best if they just made the payment directly to the town and then we pay for the fence to get fixed.
Have you talked to him, Sonny?
No, Chad's doing the talking today.
Okay.
And then while they're here, they, that backside of the fence that goes along the community building, that's the other quote for them to fix that. So it's, it's got some holes and it's dilapidated on that side.
Yeah. And that quote is for five thousand seven hundred thirty-eight dollars and seventeen cents.
And it'd probably be easier to get them while they're here already.
Yeah.
To get them done, cause it's hard to get some of these people here, so.
So the board, what's the board's will on that? You wanna fix that fence, too, while they're here, or?
I like how they placed it.
Put that in a motion.
I like the motion. We just fix the fence while they're here.
We may have to get a, I'm sorry to interrupt, but you may have, cause these quotes are just good for five days and they're dated February the ninth. So we might need to get new quotes before we pass it, cause I'm sure the prices and everything is moved up.
Do you want to pass it as it is and then pass it as it is?
And then if they're amended.
Okay.
You're, you're passing it as it is, not as amended.
Okay. As is.
And then see what happens.
Yeah.
I'll say it. Can I ask a motion?
It's unanimous.
Okay. You want those people just to make the check out to the town?
I think that would be the easiest. That way we can count throughout one check for the whole amount.
Right.
All right, yeah. Next on the agenda, number six, uh, Bill Young, you've got the floor, Mr. Young.
I've got, has everyone been to the Laura Street location and seen the problems? And do we reckon, do we all understand what the problems are? Or is this something that we need to explain from the first, from the beginning again?
Have you had anybody to look at it lately, or?
Uh, not only the people who came who gave me the sixty-five thousand dollar quote to reinforce my side of the street. But they said, if they do it and the traffic stays as, as it is and the city doesn't do anything to reinforce anything, then it's, it may continue to happen. So I'm, I'm reluctant to spend sixty-five thousand dollars preventing the building from falling until it's falls. And then it has to be repaired.
Yeah.
Then not only do I lose the income, but the city loses the tax income if the building closes and, and, uh, half of the sewage line, I mean, half of the plumbing lines fall apart.
Yeah. Mr. Young, can you get those gentlemen to address the board, or?
Well, they came from Raleigh or somewhere, so I don't know if they're gonna make a trip to Robbinsville to address the board, but you could get a letter.
You have a documentation of that, or?
Yeah, they had, they sent me the quote and they said some things, but I, um, that's only part of the problem. So the fact that the damage is being done is one thing. The fact that there's so much traffic on a street that's only meant for one car. And that there's trucks and buses and all sorts of things. I heard a bus, a school bus, pass through there last week where everyone screamed.
Oh, man.
You know what I mean, like, oh, and I looked down and there was the bus. So it meant that the driver maybe was having fun, but when you have that kind of weight going on a little street like that. Okay, we have the problem with the power pole. Sometime that's gonna fall. We, if you've all seen it, that power pole is going to break. It's gonna, if, I hope it doesn't kill anybody, but something has to be done. You know, everyone says, oh, well, it's the power company's pole, or it's the city street that's causing the problem, but something has to be done. So I'm still here, I, I have the same, I've, nothing changed to the story from when I was here two months ago or three months ago. This, the, the story exists, so I'm not sure if you came up with a solution, whether one-way. Making it a one-way street or closing the street completely. All of these things are good options to reduce the amount of friction and wear that's working on the street going down. But if nothing is done, we're just waiting for the big accident to happen. Both my motel building falling another six inch or a foot all at once. And I don't know if, uh, you know, I don't know what action that I can propose, cause I already proposed three or four different things. Speed bumps would help. One-way would help. Closing the street would help. But, you know, no one wants to take any aggressive decision and say, okay, we're gonna close the street. You, am I supposed to petition for that? Is that something that I do to, you know, cause we spoke about it already. And I gave my different options of things that would be better, and so did the previous owner of the, of the restaurant. He was requesting twenty times or thirty times with the other mayor that we do something about that street. And, you know, of course, he's at that corner where people go through the parking places. That obviously, if there was a pole sticking up out of the square of where the parking place would be, it would be a bigger journey.
Yeah.
For all those people who are going, who transition from thirty-five miles an hour to forty-five miles an hour down the hill.
But, Mr. Young, if we made it one-way, it would have to come to one-way from Rodney Old Bypass. And cause the tractor trailers have to come in to, uh, Benny and Wesley's yard and, and plus the welded shop.
Part of the complication.
Yeah. And then your guest would have to go all the way down Main Street and get on the bypass and come back around.
So you don't have an idea, because, you know, you, you can't.
Cause they can't bring tractor trailers off of that hill.
Yeah, but it would be, if we're gonna block it from one side, it's, you know, it's a complicated issue.
Yeah.
Cause we're not gonna block my guests from going to their rooms.
Right.
They're not gonna, when their room is forty feet away from the, from the motel, they're not gonna drive four hundred yards to get to their room. Cause that's.
Right.
More or less, the street has to become the hotel's property or something. Then I can allow the, cause I think it might have been at one time. That's, that's one thing that seems to be gray about the past. It seems that the street was created as part of the motel property and that only the people of the motel were using it. And it was designed to be the motel, restaurant, street only. And then at some point in time, in histor- historically, I don't know when, but that it became a two-way street. And all the traffic started coming through there. So I don't know about the history of Robbinsville and that street. I only know that a lot of traffic is going down that street and a lot of heavy traffic, including buses and such. And that, um, it used, if it were just, if I were to, if it were to become a part of the motel property. Then I could control, I could close it and it would only be open to those guests that were staying below.
Yeah.
But I'm not, you know, there's no easy solution to it.
Yeah.
Certainly, the people who need access from the, the height, the, uh, the big commercial property there with moving all the big rigs and stuff, they're gonna have access to it. Even, you know, to a certain point, I don't know if it were to, I don't know, I don't know.
Cause I think if we close the road, I mean, we're not gonna put barriers up and you'll still have that traffic.
Oh, we'd have to close it.
Like put barriers up to keep people from?
Well, it would be a, some sort of sign that would say closed to tr- normal traffic and only open to motel traffic or something.
Um, did you, did you bring your proposals from this company in Raleigh for us to see? And did, did you, what did those people from Raleigh say that we needed to do? We can't really make our decision on just what you're saying. We have no, no figures before us.
We had an idea what we were trying.
Well, an idea, yeah, we can all talk about our idea, but until we actually have what needs to be done.
But there, there's nothing that, if you, I can get them to come and give the city a proposal of what the city can do that would make it so that my motel is safe. But that's sort of a separate issue from the fact that the damage is continuing to happen. That it's moving that, I haven't got a measurement, but I don't know if it's two inches a year or three inches a year. The road is moving down. And that there's ev- did you pass by and see the broken?
Yeah, I've went by and seen that.
So.
I mean, me myself, I think we need to close that section of the road off from the top to the bottom of his. And then if, if his, um, people that stay at those bottom ones have to drive around, they have to, too.
No.
Um.
That's what he doesn't want.
That's what he doesn't want.
That's not a realistic proposal.
Maybe we need, see, that realistic proposal is not accepted. So what if we look into?
Oh, wait, no, no, no. Don't say that.
Given that part of the road, checking into that and working on that. And then close that off completely and only he allows, who goes through there or whatever, if that's gonna be his property. Um, it's not like there's not options and that we haven't looked at it and we haven't thought about it. But I will say this.
I'll get the people from Raleigh.
You on it.
I'll get the people from Raleigh to explain.
Or even in a letter, something like that.
Yeah, just something, just bring, I mean, you've not even brought your proposal to us and showed us. We don't even have an idea of what they're saying that we need to do.
What is a sixty-five thousand dollar document? They would have based it on material.
All the different things that they have to do. It's not only just the street side.
Given that to you.
Oh, yeah, I have that.
Okay, but that's what the town needs.
Yeah, that's what we're asking.
The town needs that, so it can make.
They, they had a, they said they write a letter that.
Well, no, but let, share your material. You have, they provide it for you, all the information.
Six hours, so.
Okay, and then they were able to estimate a sixty-five thousand dollar repair. Please give that to the town, so they can review that to help them make a decision.
Shall I send it before the next meeting, so that we can put it on that? Or should I bring it to the next?
Yeah, just send it to us before.
I'll forward it to you here in the next week.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Young.
With the proposal, with two or three different proposals, if that's better. But I think, uh, I don't wanna be a, stick in the mud. I just, I just didn't, I don't know what I can close that makes everybody happy.
Yeah.
But I think her idea was that the best, that's the best idea I've heard, but.
I just wanna, I just wanna throw, so could, would it be possible to make it like a gated driveway for your guests? You know, with one of those.
Well, that's similar to her proposal.
Not if it's still city street.
No, 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 it'd have to be.
And if it's, and if, I may be mistaken, but it's just like the alleyway. Half of it will go back to the property on the other side of the mountain, correct? So he won't even own it entirely. Because whoever owns the field's property will own half of it and you will own half of it, if we give it back to the owners. So, I mean, that's something else to think of, too.
Perhaps, yeah.
Yeah, so.
Cause they, the, the restaurant next door doesn't need to go down that way. So they're, 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 that's gonna become a medical practice, if I'm not mistaken.
There's a house underneath it.
I'm sorry?
There's a house underneath the, uh, medical practice.
There's a.
But, I mean, still regardless, it's still tied to it and the, the only way they can get to it is through that.
They are two apartments.
They don't drive, they don't drive, they're parked there. They drive in, they park in front and they drive in. Yeah, they don't, there's no parking access to them for them from, on the downside. So that's a little bit different, but, okay, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for coming in, yeah. All right. Um, next on the agenda is the, uh, Community Outreach Center. And, uh, Tasha couldn't be present. She had training to go to in Silver. But she asked me if I would just, uh, bring it up. She was just asking if the town would donate twenty-five percent of the revenue off of the alcohol tax to help with that.
I, I don't, I don't know, I mean, we don't know what the revenue is gonna be and where. You know, I'd be, I'd be more, I'd help them with like a set donation than a.
Okay.
And this set donation is in the last, what she presented last was twenty-two hundred and four dollars.
I was thinking maybe we could maybe look at maybe putting it in the budget for next fiscal year.
Well, the thing about it, too, is we are automatically supposed to take so much of those sales percentage and give back to that. So that would be.
Give back to what?
To, toward the outreach stuff, toward the alcohol.
Treatments and stuff.
Treatment centers and stuff.
We're not gonna have.
It's gonna be a law for we receiving anything.
Yeah, I know, so until we.
Having hard liquor. I think people confuse, if you have hard liquor, you, you give, um, a portion of it to law enforcement. It's a big sum.
Uh-huh.
You give a portion of it to school, we don't have hard liquor, so we're, we're not looking at a lot. And I think people confuse that, you know, when you have an ABC store, it's a whole different picture. Yeah, you would have had a lot of money from that and the schools would have, you know, so.
But since we don't, there's no way we can go ahead and guarantee a twenty-five percent to that.
That's what I'm saying.
I mean.
That's what I said, we can put that on hold, but if they're wanting the, the refrigerator and stuff, we can help them out with that, the two refrigerators. Material things, now I don't agree with that right now as far as the, but we don't know how much is coming in.
Right.
I'm, I'm for the, the twenty-two oh four, if we have it in the budget.
We could just put it in next year's budget.
The.
Yeah.
Which is, why not?
Yeah, let's wait and put it in next year's budget.
Yeah, cause we just, we just got about a little bit over a month left in this fiscal year.
Well, last month, we had talked about the mayor's expense and he still has three thousand forty dollars. He said he's not gonna spend that in his budget.
That's up to the mayor, it's his budget.
Okay. We'll figure how much it is and stuff, how much was you?
Twenty-two oh four.
And I've got how much in there?
Three thousand dollars.
Okay, yeah, we can get to.
Can I make a motion? Don't we take it out of the mayor's fund? His, his agreement?
Yeah, I'll say you can take it.
Unanimous.
All right. Next on the, uh, agenda is the, uh, the speed bump on Moore Street. And, uh, we've had no complaints about it, so, I mean, how would the board feel about just leaving it in place?
I would say let it be until we start getting complaints, because then we get complaints, we can take it up, cause it's not ours. We'll just take it up. I mean, right now, we've not received any complaints on it, other than it's been there. And they thought we did it, and I said, no, we ain't putting them. But, I mean, they, they weren't complaining, they were just letting us know that there's one there. So, I mean, that's up to y'all, but that's, that's, just let it, let it be until we get a complaint, we'll deal with it then.
Yeah.
And it's just one speed bump, I think, isn't it?
Yeah.
Is it two? Or did you?
Very small speed bump.
Yeah. Yeah, I'll just let it go.
Yeah.
Okay. Just put it in the form of a motion, yes.
Other than, you know, it's not, the motion is, is we won't be addressing the issue until we receive a complaint on the set speed bump on Moore Street.
Okay, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's not ours, so.
Okay.
We'll just take it off, though. Just remove it.
Okay, just draw a cap, okay. Next up is the, uh, temporary water use policy. I typed up a, uh, policy, just a rough draft of it. Should be in your packet.
This is basically what we talked about last time, wasn't it?
Yeah.
And I think that's what we agreed on, that's what it's kinda been anyway, is.
Yeah.
So.
We added, uh, overage.
Yeah.
Um, that was the only change, really.
And we talked about that, too, I think.
Yeah. And that's just the, like, the same that you would be charged on your regular rates if you go over.
You wanna read the?
Do you have anything to add to it, Michelle?
No, uh, I'm just looking at it.
The only thing I can see, that it has to be an existing service, I mean, that wouldn't cover putting in a tab.
New tab and stuff.
No tab or nothing.
Yeah, that would have to be an existing service.
Yeah.
So do you think we need to add that to the purpose part of it? Add those words to it?
Okay.
Allow customers temporary use of water service on existing meters.
Yes.
Okay. On existing meters.
And would that change any of the?
Okay, and then say overview, there is demand, there is.
There is.
Demand for customers.
Okay.
Who desire to temporarily use water for cleaning purposes. I put a period instead of straight the end, and this policy will allow customers to use. For a short term. For a short term.
So the purpose would be to allow customers temporary use of water service on existing meters. Overview, there is demand for customers who desire temporary use of water for cleaning purposes.
Period.
Period. This policy will allow customers to use water for temporary, short-term use, for short-term use.
Coming to come. And we have an application for temporary.
You don't have that? I don't know if you can read my writing or not.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's in the packet, too.
And that's the, the actual form that they have to sign for the town, for. I mean, it's a pretty set, temporary, I mean.
Is the forty dollars, and the forty dollar fee is due upfront, uh, before water will be turned on?
Yeah.
That's the charge.
Yeah, that's the charge.
The charge.
Yeah.
And anything over twenty-five hundred gallons in a week, is they got a leak or? Can you read my writing?
Yeah, I think so.
And the second page is just the application for the temporary service contract. So I make a motion to approve the temporary use, wa- temporary water use policy at Town Hall. As amended, and the application.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Okay. All right, uh, next on the agenda is the, uh, Town Hall crosswalks. And you probably noticed the DOT committed painting the crosswalk and you put up a, another sign on this side.
You know, I've been looking for that sign and he actually had taken me up around and showed me where it was at, cause I hadn't seen it coming up the road. So I didn't even see it.
Yeah, a lot of people.
Yeah, it's still, it's still dangerous, you know, at least they would put up some flashing.
And we did look at the prices for the flashing lights, and they're about four grand, cause they're solar.
Yeah. Now.
And DOT won't?
It won't be the, uh, the flashing lights as opposed to doing like the, like old Franklin. They got them down Main Street there where they got the raised crosswalk. If it's a problem, keeps persisting.
Yeah, that would be a DOT, because that's the state road.
Yeah.
Yeah. We could petition the DOT to see if they can look into putting a raised, a little raised crosswalk in there. And that might jolt a few people, slow down, maybe.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Um, what if there was like a lip gate or something where guests had a, had a little clicker button or something to open it? So only guests were able to get down there, but they're, you know, you know what I'm talking about?
What, the crosswalk?
Like a, well, you know how they have a lip gate, kind of like an airport? If there was something like that installed and every guest that checked in that had a place down there had a little clicker for it.
Oh, are you, are you speaking of the motel right now? Cause we're on, on another issue.
Oh, no, I thought you were still talking about the motel.
No, we're on the crosswalks.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, never mind.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, but like, like Murphy, they've got a sign right in the middle of the road and the, Branson City does, too, but DOT wouldn't go for it. I asked them about it.
So, I mean, just have to see if we can petition the state, maybe if that doesn't help any, then we can see if they can put a raised crosswalk in it. I mean, it's light, right?
Yeah, I know. Okay. All right. Next is, uh, the alleyway and David Hall is not here, but there's a couple of his neighbors that have sent letters opposing any kind of closure of that alleyway.
If you're in that area, I mean, if you have any idea of what this.
I'm not confident that road now is really starting to be, uh, there ain't nobody on that shit, no.
I'm not confident that road down there is really starting to be, uh, there ain't nobody on that shit, man.
Well, I mean, before we make a decision, and we can get the rest of the property owners, or, you know, whether they're for or against it, that would help us make a decision. While we got two.
To close an alley, you need, the person making it needs to sign a petition. I've got one, not on me, but.
Yeah.
So people don't have to struggle, and I can send it to Sonia, but they have to fill out a petition.
And we can get it to David, because he's the one wanting to close, the one that wants it closed.
And everybody wants a closed sign.
That lives on the street, right? No?
Oh, yeah, they have to live on the street, but when you do your public hearing, you've got to listen to anyone.
Yeah.
So he's got to go to a public hearing.
Yeah, to close an alley.
It's something we can do, less, less like that.
Would that have to?
So I need to send you the petition?
Yes, please.
Would that have to be unanimous, Ellen, or for that to close?
Your, your board votes on it after the public hearing.
No, I mean, all, I mean, if he, on that petition, would he have to get all the residents?
No, it's the board's decision.
Yeah.
But it would help his case more if he had majority of the residents that live on that street want it closed. Keep these on, you got a copy of these?
Yes, yes.
Keep those.
All right. Next on the agenda is the, uh, budget amendment for, uh, Wilma Millsaps's.
Motion approved.
Say.
Unanimous.
Okay. All right. Next was a budget amendment for the, uh, RTA car show concert, fourteen hundred dollars.
Yeah, we didn't, uh, vote on it, we tabled it, so at this time I'll make a motion that we give the Royal Tourism Authority fourteen hundred dollars for advertisement. Be a budget amendment number thirteen. I approve that too. Or we have to do one and then the other. So I'll prove the fourteen hundred dollars to RTA.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
And then I'll approve the budget amendment number thirteen to do so.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda is the, uh, hometown of Rodney Millsaps's signs quote, and I'm still working with the DOT to, you know, how large the signs can be and everything.
You want it every entrance of the town?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, all four entrances.
Okay. All right.
And, uh, hope the next, by next meeting we'll have approval from the DOT and, and quotes and everything. And, uh, next on the agenda was, uh, the wifi equipment on the town building down here.
Mm-hmm. Did you get all that information?
She said that it would be for five years, and it would use a minimum amount of electricity.
Which they're paying for the electricity?
Yeah.
So it's just, they're just wanting our approval to put it on our town building.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, we approved it once before, when the project went through.
I was thinking you didn't approve it, because they wanted.
Well, they weren't going to use that building.
They wanted something, they didn't, what they put in write, they need to put something in writing. Blossom West needs to put something in writing, exactly what they want. And. I mean, it's town property, you have to decide that.
I mean, we've been working on this downtown wifi for.
Okay.
Years.
They need to put it in writing, because what I've seen is not five years. It's beyond what a municipality can approve, what they're doing. So they need to put it on writing.
Like a?
What it is they're asking for, on, to put on the town.
Like a MOA.
Okay, and, and, and they can only do it so long as the town always reserves a right, if you need that building. Or you need it renewed. Sure, you'll do it maybe for five years, but they need to put that in writing. That's not what I've seen on Blossom.
Okay.
And.
You take care of that?
Yeah.
Basically, basically like a MOA of us letting them use their equipment at our right, that we can take, if we need the, the space on the building.
Municipality needs it, yeah. You have to always reserve that.
Okay. Now what exactly do you need from them, Ellen?
Just what do you need from a contract?
It's a MOA, just memorizing.
Memorandum of understanding.
I mean, that.
MOU.
We don't need a, a contract, we need a memorandum of understanding about the five years, the size of it, the, who's going to maintain it. And that they'll, um, sign up with Duke Energy.
Well, see, they're going to use whoever the recipient is, we leased the building to our A, he's going to do the electricity on it. Which is great, I believe, that's leased the building.
Does Gray agree to that?
It's Gray's project.
It's Gray's project?
Yeah.
And, uh, and that we reserve the right if we need it.
Reserve the right to remove that?
Yeah.
If, if we need the space on the roof.
Yeah.
Basically.
So what you're saying, we need a memorandum of understanding, and the size.
Amount of time.
Amount of time, who's going to maintain it?
Is that on the old VFW bill or the town?
Old VFW.
Okay.
Okay.
When we re- we reserve the right to.
Move it if we.
Request it to be removed if the municipality needs.
Needs that space.
Needs that space. Actually, you have that understanding with Gray too.
Yeah.
I don't think. Okay, next up was the, uh, UNC School of Government Internship Program. You had mentioned maybe reaching out to another town to split the cost, but I've not, and it'd get another municipality to do it, so, I mean. Would you still be interested in it or not?
Personally, no, that's me though. I mean, if we got extra ten thousand, just give it to them boys.
I mean, we have a.
I mean, I agree that we need a grant writer. But I'm not sure that just covers a grant writer and all.
That covers a lot of different stuff on the internship.
Grant writer automatically gets so much of the grant that you get.
If they're the administrator, yes.
Yeah, I guess I'm against it too. Not really against it, it's just that I wish we didn't have to fork out the whole ten thousand for it, because I don't really see them.
Cause it's just for what, ten months?
Eleven months. They're working forty hours a week. I mean, that's a pretty good deal to get somebody working on their masters for that. I mean, they, they can be very beneficial. They don't have to pay, you know, income taxes on them or.
What's their job description?
I mean, they can help us.
Would they receive a check from the town, or does that money go somewhere else, if we agreed to do it? Would they get a check from the town for the ten thousand dollars?
We wrote a check to the UNC School of Government, and they paid for the payroll taxes and our additional salary. It's their way, we're just using them.
Well, could we look into that for our, our new, uh, budget?
Yeah.
Could we look into, do we have to get them? Yeah, what is the time?
What's the time? We got, I can see. I'll have to reach out to them. They, you know, they wanted to.
Last month?
Yeah, but, I mean, I can reach back out to them, and we can look at, maybe put it in the next budget.
Just review the table.
We'll just play that table and discuss it, probably. Okay. All right then. And then next on the agenda was the.
Um, I, I hate, can I ask something?
Yeah.
Okay, what if, um, so this person helps out with the town's grants and all that stuff, right? What if I brought it to the, the tourism board and seen if they were interested in maybe putting out some of the money for it too? I don't think that the tourism board needs to put out half of it, because their grants that they're writing for is not huge grants, like what the town's is. But if that person could help out the, the tourism and the town.
Yeah, I don't see why they couldn't.
Okay. Well, I will see what they want to do at our next meeting, and then we'll have that finalized or thought of, and then go from there.
Okay.
But I will need some stuff to give them, so that I can let them know that this person hired on will be doing stuff for the tourism thing too.
Okay, I'll reach back out to them.
We should still have that flyer somewhere.
And I had it in the email, and I, you know, I looked at it and thought it was kind of neat, but I just didn't know.
Yeah, they've never had anybody this far west, and they just wanted somebody in this part of the state.
Okay. I mean, that's just a thought.
Okay.
Kind of see.
All right, I'll reach back out to them.
Um, okay, I'm sorry.
All right. And, uh, next on agenda is, uh, ethics training. Sonia had found some ethics training, uh, via Zoom.
The UNC School of Government.
Yeah, and that's just good for that one day.
And, and then it will be, um, available, it says it's a training session on May twenty-sixth, and then it will be available after that for Aurora.
So it's not mandatory that day, you can watch it later, okay?
But if we watch that day, well, I see, it's seventy-five dollars if we, for one person. But if we all four take it at the same time, then it's a hundred fifty.
Yeah.
That is a bonus.
So, I mean, like, some people may not be able to be there that certain day, or whatever. It's, it's for two hours, and I'm off that day, so I'm, I'm good with it. We, we want to do the single participant for each of us, and we want to do the two to four participants, for a hundred and fifty for everybody.
What day is May twenty-sixth?
It's on Thursday.
It's on a Thursday, and it's at what time?
Uh, from ten to twelve. I think ten to twenty-sixth.
Um, I could be that second person.
Yeah, I could be there too. Yeah, I can be there. So, this would be the, the.
And it's online, and we'll be doing it here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just wondering if y'all, y'all can either do it, well, at his dad's car dance.
Yeah, we, it'd be one computer, but we all said.
Yeah.
I think me and Sean did it one time.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, and I were in there.
So we went for four participants, a hundred and fifty dollars, and who made that motion? Did you, Sean, did you make that? I mean, did you make the motion?
Sure, I made the motion.
I'll say.
Unanimous.
Uh-huh. Okay. All right, any, any further old business? And, uh, moving on to the mayor update, I'm happy to announce that, uh, Bison EV is, uh, is starting the process of moving into the plant.
Okay, can you explain what that is? Cause that's first I heard of it.
Yeah, it's a company that, uh, converts, uh, vehicles up into electric.
How long we know about this?
Been working on it for several weeks, trying to get them in here, but in a lot of hours.
How many employees is he thinking that?
Could be several hundred.
That's a good thing.
Yeah, the best thing's happened to this town in a long time. Some much-needed jobs back in here.
So I'm sure he's probably got to do some work to the building.
Yeah, yeah, it won't happen overnight. It'll, it'll take a little while, this work needs to be done.
Did they buy the building from Jimmy, or are they leasing it, or what?
Um, right now, they've not purchased it yet.
Okay. So it's not concrete yet, then?
They're going to lease it, is my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah. And then, uh, McGill, I've been talking to Joe with McGill, and, uh, our, uh, Tullow Creek Water Plant and everything, everything's submitted, we're just waiting to hear back on that. And then the, the project on Laura Street, uh, we're waiting on the environmental report, when that gets done, should be able to, for acceptance to be applied summer. If everything goes smoothly, we should be able to start up at this time.
I hope so.
Sonia.
And the finance update. You have your budget versus actual for the month end of March, two thousand twenty-two. We are at the end of, um, March, still at a ninety-seven percent co- collection rate for our taxes. We have brought in a hundred and thirty-four thousand, two sixty-two more than we spent in the general fund. And after our loan payments that are due in May and June, we will have brought in a hundred and twenty-five thousand, nine thirty-three more in the water plant. So we are not overboding in any department.
Thank you.
Or any fund at this point.
You too.
Which I'm very thankful about. We're having a really good year.
That always happens. That is.
I do, I do want to remind everybody that, uh, we have a budget work session tomorrow at two o'clock, and I'll have the, the packets ready, if you'd like to review them. I won't be emailing them to you. So quite a bit of information, stapled information, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda is, uh, we've got, Mr. Quinn Carver is looking to possibly lace the Old Town Hall. Oh, yeah, remind, sorry.
Okay. No. Hey, I got a letter from, uh, Andy Russell at DOT. Said, uh, thanked us for meeting with them, talked about the wayfinding signage that we've got, most of the posts are put up now, but they stopped us from completing the project. He has, uh, attached, we have to have a three-party encroachment agreement between DOT, NC DOT, the town of Robbinsville, and revved up prior to any additional work taking place. The town of Robbinsville must agree to accept final ownership of the signage upon completion of the installation. So he has also sent me, I've got this encroachment agreement. Although I did make copies for everybody, but this is the agreement that they want signed.
We did one once before for the, the walking signs that they, that Gray put up, we had to enter the same kind of.
It's basically, they're just wanting you to maintain the signs once they go up.
But the town will be responsible for them.
Yeah. They should be liable to no maintenance to them once they're up.
No, there's, yeah, they, they should be.
Unless one needs to be replaced or something, but.
The, um, everything, all the signs are on hold. We didn't order, we haven't ordered any signs yet, because we have to agree on what's going in. And they sent me a bunch of, of, uh, suggestions or whatever. And as I'm reading through this, it's, it looks like there's no laws or regulations that require you. Our idea from the beginning was to have signs, because right now, all the traffic in town goes up by Skyway Convenience and out the bypass to go to the Cherry Hill Skyway. And we were trying to get traffic back up through town for businesses. And so one of the things that we wanted to do was have a sign down by the hub that would direct people through town for the Cherry Hill Skyway. The DOT keeps saying, well, we don't want you to put up any signs over two miles away, and I looked through their, so far from what I can read, there's no, that's not written in stone. And to me, this town, we have, we're, we're unique in other towns, because people come here to ride the Dragon and the Skyway. Or to go on the App Trail. Those are all two miles out. And, you know, but for us to be more tourist-friendly, it seems like we should be able to put up signs for the Dragon. I know I, I rode up here for fifteen years before I ever knew where everything was. And it would just be, it would be a good thing to promote tourism and stuff, if we could put signs like up that up. But that could be a fight that we get into, if we, we get the encroachment thing, get the signposts up.
Yeah, but we definitely don't want to be pushing our buttons.
No, 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 no. You want to get the encroachment agreement, get the signs up, and then as you, as you, as, as we sit down and figure out what we're going to put on the signs, then I think, you know, that would be something that we can discuss and see and look through these regulations tomorrow. So, but it's on ho- it's on hold, and I can't, uh, we, we also have money to put banners up on Main Street. You know, we had some banners, there were banners up before, and we've got some additional money in that grant from Gray to do the banners, but we don't know until we finish the wayfinding signs with how, how many, what we can order, put up. So everything's kind of, I, I can't go and finish putting the posts in or anything like that, until we get the encroachment agreement. And then I think, I think it's A-OK, I think Anthony's on board with everything. So.
We'll let our attorney look over that encroachment, make sure everything's, I'm pretty sure they, that, they have to do that for everybody.
It is, I mean, their encroachment agreements, DOT isn't gonna allow anything without the encroachment agreement, here's, here, you've done it before, if it worked, but one thing I'm always alarmed, when I see an agreement that refers to documents outside of the agreement, like you agree to all their policies and procedures for accommodating utilities on highway right-ofways, you agree to their manual and uniform traffic control devices for streets and highways, you would agree to pay their division engineer, now, those are two manuals that are outside this agreement, I don't know what they say, and I don't know what we'd be committing to, um, then the other thing is that you all are gonna, not DOT, but the other two parties, um, will indentify and hold harmless DOT from any cost, and you'll also agree to pay their division engineer for inspection of the work, when it's completed, and it's sort of an open-ended cost, you don't know what, what their cost is, and I don't know how much money Rev Up has to pay the cost to the engineer.
I don't think they charged us anything last time, they can't.
It'd be nice, yeah, so it's, you have these manuals in here, um, there are lots of these encroachments, uh, but that would be my only concern, you're agreeing to something that's not in here, those two manuals, and just make sure the cost isn't exorbitant.
So, what's your recommendation on? Do we, do, does Rev Up need to pursue trying to get the manuals, or what?
Are you working with Shane Garland?
No, Andy.
Andy Russell.
Andy Russell, please.
Yeah, Andy, Andy from Andrews.
It would be good to talk to the person who does the encroachment agreement.
That fellow's name is Michael, uh.
I think he's at a rolling.
Michael Jones, I believe.
No, he's at Andrews, too.
Is he at Andrews, too?
Yeah, they're in the same office, I learned.
Oh, so they're both, okay, so they're both over there.
I don't know, he told me that he was, I don't know, I think he told me that he was,
I'll call him, it's at Andrews, too, because I've been working with both of those through poster service, though.
He go, he must travel to Andrews sometimes, because he called me from Andrews, but I was thinking that he might have been coming from another part of the state, too.
And he might be that, too, he might be spread thin.
Yeah, just be, I mean, a chat with him would be good, um, and I guess the thing, and make sure, if I understood you correctly, you're gonna get, you need to be more than two miles, and will they allow?
Well, no, we don't, we, we'll use them no matter what, we would like to be able to put a sign up that says Dragon or Cherry Hill Skyway, but we'll use them for the town no matter what.
Okay, because for them to understand the area, this isn't Wake County or.
Exactly.
Um, all those towns in between, I mean, it's just different.
Exactly, and, and before I do that, though, I think I, I want to read over, they've given me some guidelines, I just want to make sure, because it seems to me that there's nothing in there other than their desire not to go over two miles, but it depends, I think it depends on the situation, so, and I don't want a muddy bar, I want to get the encroachment permit, because we've, we've got everything just sitting standing, we can't finish anything.
That's right, yeah.
So it's kind of needs to happen as quick as we can.
Do you think one of them might come to our next meeting, and if there are any, we can, you know, get it straightened out?
Just to talk about their encouragement, I mean, I'm, um, there's a difference between a waterline encouragement that I worked on Duke and this, or a DOT, and this, I mean, just to hear them, what is this?
Right. Because we want to move with it, too, you know?
Waterline is one thing, you know, it'd just be nice to hear about, how they handle their signs.
Okay, well, the only thing that I knew before, when we were talking with them, was that they just wanted us to have the signs made in such a way that they would be breakaway if anybody hit them, and that was their only, the only thing that he seemed to be concerned about, and I never even knew that they, there needed to be an encroachment permit.
It'd been years ago since we did the last one, and I didn't think of it, till he should, till, he said, look through your emails, and I looked, and I found it, I found the old encroachment agreement.
So, so, basically, you want me to try to get copies of the things that we're agreeing to?
We're just having an agreement, have.
Come, come, come.
And, and see how they treat signs, I mean, I, I've never dealt with most signs, just something a little different, like a waterfall.
Okay.
So, to, to hear about their signs and.
And, and I'll do that, no problem, we'll, we'll come back for our next meeting, as an update to, uh, that CPNI Institute that I talked to y'all about last meeting, the Construction Professionals Network Institute, they have, uh, committed that they're gonna do that institute on August, or not August, October sixth and seventh, and they have them, I think we're probably meet at the, uh, Robbinsville United Methodist Church up there, but I've, I've got to send some pictures.
I think it's like four hour week stay, I think, roughly.
It goes from, I think, from eleven or twelve till the end of the day, Thursday and Friday, it's a Thursday and Friday, and, uh, so, and, but, but, the other thing that they asked about, they asked about, um, I know that, that Sonya and Sherry here are covered up all the time, and they asked about, you know, does someone from the town want it, they're gonna, we're gonna be doing some preliminary work and questions and things for what they cover when they come here, and so I didn't know, you, you folks don't want any more work to handle.
They're pretty busy.
Yeah, so they, they just said sometimes that a, a town clerk or, or town manager would handle some of the, some of the correspondence back and forth, but, I mean, we can, we can handle it, it's not a big deal, so, and, and we're happy to do that, but we want you all to be in, involved as much as you can, you know, it'll affect the town.
All right, well, thank you, John.
All right, no problem, appreciate it.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, Quinn Carver's interested in leasing the Old Town Hall building.
We'll have to get, uh, him the information, like, we did the, what's her name, I can't think her name.
Big Green Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, Amber Benton.
And it's a list of stuff that they have to do, is that correct?
Well, that, right, so you can do.
So we can proceed on, if they choose to do that, and I just can't remember what those steps are, I don't remember.
I'll, I'll send it to you, maybe, basically, um, when you did, Amber Benton, um, if he wants to move ahead, um, there's got to be a motion on leasing the Old Town Hall, on at least, or by the next agenda, at which point, um, um, you would, um, set a public hearing, and if for every lease, you got to set a public hearing, and then you do the, have a public hearing and vote.
Well, let's wait to make the motion at the next meeting, because I'd like for Sean, you take them, them to see the basement area.
Yeah, because we'll need a lot. We'll need who he is, if it's a company, uh, corporation, uh.
I mean, we can make the motion before then.
So, yeah, the motion involves about eight things that have to be in it, so, um, but we need to know who, is, who's leasing it.
Business name.
Address, telephone number, the purpose of it, um, and that would go into the motion.
We don't have that, do we? The business name or anything like that?
It's Carver contract, and that's what it is.
If you get it to me, I'll fix the motion for the next meeting, and then you'd set the public hearing. If it's ended in Ju, June, the motion, have a public hearing in July, and vote on it. Yeah, I mean, that's.
One way out.
But it takes it, I mean, it took.
Our last one was out.
About six months.
About six to eight months.
Finally got it all done.
Yeah, yeah, it can't have, it, and you have to say why you're not using it, I mean, that's part of the motion that you've all determined that not needed at this time.
Okay.
So we'll work on that.
Yeah, if you'll get it to me, I'll come in, I'll bring it.
What are you, Ellen, the business name?
Address, contact.
Person and number.
Yeah, I mean, he can't give his personal name and then decide it's gonna be his corporation, but we, we need who's gonna be the tenant.
Okay.
Or the renter, who's gonna lease it.
We'll leave that on the table till next month.
All right, um, next on the agenda is Megan.
Megan, are you with us?
Still there?
Yes, I am still here.
All right, if you have the floor, ma'am.
Okay, perfect, um, I am coming to you guys from the first library, and we would like to start hosting some things in the town, um, and hopefully with cooperation from the town, and even more hopefully with customer financial help with advertising and, and maybe even volunteers with organs, states like that, within the town, um, the first thing I wanted to talk about was, we'd like to start hosting an annual ending school, um, and a, a water bash for the kids, probably a fundraiser for the library, um, what we're planning on having is fire trucks, police cars, um, Troy Brightback also contacted and said that there's, in, I think in Cherokee County, they're making a swap vehicle, um, that, that can come down, um, and ambulance as well, that we can have parks open for the kids, you know, officers or full department to be answering questions, that they can sit inside the cab and just kind of look around, I, I think that it'd be good for kids, you know, have an idea, um, who's comfortable with, you know, looking at changes of profession, and, you know, to show them the perks of the people, you know, really good life, and kind of the firemen, so, again, those things, um, so we'd like to have that there, but also the fire trucks would be loaded up with water, and they'd be sprayed from the parking lot around the track of the high school, which I already have permission from Angie Knight to use, um, they'd be spraying water, this is, uh, is the water bash, so the point is to kind of get wet, so we would have water balloons, we have twerkins, we have buckets, uh, and hoses and things like that that are gonna fill up, you know, so that the kids can kind of play in the water and have a lot of fun, um, we live and probably set up back tires and different things as obstacle course, and have like elimination rounds for people who don't want to bring their own twerkins, or you might even have some that can be borrowed, and so that they could do like double elimination twerk, twerk gun rounds, and things like that, um, and that would be, you know, if one dollar a tree or something, each kid would pay to enter, and then there'd be a prize at the end, so that's pretty much primarily where the library would make their money is, is doing that.
What date are you?
We're looking at the very last day of school, it's three twenty-seven, it's been early with these days, and it gets out, I believe, at one p.m., so we were thinking if we held it at two or three, you know, parents could pick up their kids, um, and, and drop them off there at the track, uh, we'd also like to ask the farmers market to come, you know, any crafters or vendors from the farmers market, if they want to come, if they want to sell their soaps and their honey and their, um, crafts or whatever, they can come and sell up there, with Father's Day there, with parents kind of milling around, their kids are having fun, um, it might be kind of beneficial for them, and to draw more people to it, we'd also like kids to buy local food trucks and vendors to also set up in the parking lot, so kids can go get plushies, or tea, or, you know, parents can get coffee or whatever, um, whoever, whichever vendors we can get set up, so it's kind of, it's kind of a bigger event, it's not just like, oh, it's a quick, quick, fight and go home, you know, um, we, we'd have to pay a track speeding fee with the school, and if it was hosted, if we get it hosted by the town, then the town has insurance that would cover the event, if it's not technically hosted by the town, then we have to get separate event insurance, and which we can do, but we thought, you know, it'd be nice to be able to collaborate with the town, and eventually with other organizations, Rev Up and Great as well, um, just doing some of the activities that we're planning, um, we'd also like, there's, I guess there's a something, a station that the high, high school has access to, I'm not sure where it is, but there would be some, some things like that, we might even be able to get some of the clubs, um, to hand different foods, like, hey, real water balloons, you have to target, and if you get X amount of points, or if you get the target and the whole vibe, you get this, you know, so you would try this, and so kids could have fun with different, different food stations like that, um, and maybe even help the band set up a fundraiser of some kind as well, that has to do with water, um, because I know that there, there's like, you do fundraising activities and stuff, um, we, we probably print out flyers and have them handed out to all of the kids to bring home, so that the parents will be aware, as our primary source of advertising for that, thank you who were able to help with advertising, putting a banner up by Walgreen, putting up one by the track, putting up one potentially where the current farmer's market banner goes up on the, on the opposite, on the opposite side over by Pommes Pizza, you know, right by the town there, if we have just a couple of larger banners, that people knew about it, knew that it was going on, and we have it in the newspaper, I believe, um, there's a spot on the front for around ninety-eight dollars, and it runs for about two weeks, to let people know, um, so that we can advertise in the paper as well, and just kind of have it be a reminder to people, um, and the, and the money that comes in for, to support the library, but if we make it an annual thing, then it could grow every year, and just kind of be something that the kids are motivated to stay in school for very end, until, I know a lot of them kind of skip out on that last day or two days, when those big games are over and stuff, so it'd just kind of be an extra motivation to stay in school, I've already asked Angie Knight about bringing kids over in buses, and she, she said the parents would have to take the bus and bring them over individually to the event, it would be something that makes you, with carrying them over, um, from the buses, but I think that about covers it, the water balloons, um, they have their, an attachment that sits on the end of a sticket, and so you just, you know, on the end of a hose or the end of a sticket, you, you have kids, it almost looks like octopus, it's like, and they're little tiny little drawers that are already pre-attached to water balloons, and as soon as you turn the water, the, the water on, the balloons automatically fill, and when they're ready, they pop off into a bucket of water, but each, so they're super, super fast, you know, we're sitting there having a hassle to blow them up, uh, but they cost about thirty dollars, I think for about two hundred a week, so we just figured the friends of the library would buy a bunch of those, if the town is willing to contribute money towards those as well, then the more the merrier, because, uh, it's like, right when people get out there, they, you know, the balloons start going really fast, so I know that it's gonna be a hyperman item, that helps with advertising, helps with hosting, helps with, um, maybe some of the financing of the balloons or not, and I would primarily do all of the organization and coordinating for volunteers and all of the deputies, and getting everybody there, with, you know, the all vendors and the emergency services, everybody getting them all there to have fun, and probably have music playing, all the speakers, we have, the library has speakers access, speakers that we can sit on and play with, and if there's any other questions, just let me know.
So the main thing you need from us is our consent to be like a partaker in this and use our liability insurance, is that right? Plus money?
That would be, that would be nice, yeah.
I, I know I can't be there to help, I can't, um. I, I know I can't be there to help, I can't, um. I guess that's a big undertaking.
It is, it's a good thing, but that your carrier's not, you have to sponsor it to be.
Yeah, we have to sponsor it, but to sponsor it, it sounds like s- some of us need to be there and I, I can't at that one. I mean, that's just only three weeks away and I've already, you know, um.
If you want to make a contribution for it, um, I mean, I.
The, the event insurance, if we pay for it separately, I got a quote from, um, Florida Insurance, that would think would be a hundred, fifty dollars to cover an event, two hundred and fifty people approximately. Um, so it would go up from there, I'm not sure the speed of first event, what the turnout would be. Um. That's, that's the other option that we have, to, to catch load that route. So if, if you're still wanting to sponsor, but you're not able to provide any manpower or whatever that, that you're looking for, then that's another way that it may, it can help out the organization as well.
Have you spoke with anybody from Graham County Festivals?
I have not, yes.
I would start there because they have a, an umbrella insurance that covers festivals, period. And if they're a sponsor, then they would be able to see as far as, uh, you know, funds and you could use probably be placed on their insurance.
Do you have any, any kind of information that you can send me for, uh, somebody that works for the festival?
That'd be me. So, uh, but we're having a meeting hopefully Friday, so I'll get up with you and, uh, I'll let you know when that meeting is.
Sounds good. And then another thing, while we are talking about it, because it's upcoming as well, but further away, is, and I have talked to Peter Adams about this a couple of times. We'd like to also from a library dirt, um, three to five days.
I think so.
And we'd like to add two for next year, which I can talk to him at the later side. But the one that we would like to do this year is a turkey run, either home or before or after Thanksgiving sometime, because, um, people can, can turkey basically, you know, use them for, for, even. But somewhere around Thanksgiving, we'd like to do one with a souvenir mix and plan out, I don't know how to plan out the exact list of the three, I don't know if you guys have suggestions on that. So we'll basically have somebody that's dressed with a turkey and the goal is to be to run practice with the turkey. And if you do, we're getting the top five or ten spots that you win a turkey, basically. So, um, it would be something that would need event insurance as well and something that, um, we would need to get advertising for, we want to bring in.
It'd be more about R T A than anything.
Kind of, it wouldn't be just town specific, it would be trying to bring in people to come and, and experience more.
Megan, what I'll do is I'll give you some numbers to call after the meeting, the both with the R T A and Graham County Festivals, and I believe that would be the route to go.
Definitely for that run, yeah.
Do we have anything that we can, far as funds that we can help them with?
You had put five thousand dollars into downtown projects and, or his project, and he spent twenty-five hundred, so you have twenty-five hundred left. Next month's our last month.
We'd have to give it to.
So you got twenty-five hundred, how much is this, two hundred? I mean, you have two hundred.
I'll make a motion that we, um, give them two hundred dollars toward this water event.
Do you have a second?
No, I'll say.
Unanimous.
Thank you, appreciate it.
You're welcome, Megan, have a nice day.
Bye, Megan.
Thank you, bye.
Does anybody have a Jackson, take a five-minute break?
No.
Everybody says just make it for a five minutes.
Thank you.
Do we have to motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Want something to drink, Randy?
Yeah.
Cause the baskets hang underneath it.
Underneath it.
The chair, are you trying to hide it out in here?
Canada.
I'm playing you.
He can explain better, but he's going forward. Yeah, I'll give it to you. Yeah, it's, it's going to be one best, different thing of three, bringing the best things, he said.
Did you just bring the E D? Wow, yes. Oh, wow, yes.
That wayfaring, sorry. They're talking about putting it in the hub and bringing people up mainstream, going to charity on the freeway?
Yeah, I'm not for sure, anything. They're, I think that's what he means, to bring them up this way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kind of going out to Massey Branch?
Yeah. It's, it's a little easier to give directions at Massey Branch, so that's, then, because there's so many times, but I guess, if you have enough signs.
I'm good, huh? My leg is like.
Oh, gosh, my leg, my right leg is asleep. Is that running? Is that running? Beautiful, only brought one cup. Okay.
Here you go, Randy. You can rate my ride.
What's that?
Sort of like.
That's a smaller copy, isn't it? That's the. Yellow branch.
Yeah, it's ready. All right, we call this meeting back to order. It's, uh, two twenty P M. Next on the agenda was the, uh, noise ordinance, Michael Addens, but, uh, he's not present, so, um. And I'm not sure what exactly he was going to discuss, so we'll have to move on to, to number six. And, uh, Sonia wanted to discuss that with you about the part-time employees holiday pay.
So policy that, procedures, that the mayor signs a town sheet before I make the paychecks or to approve them. And he was uncomfortable signing one of the employees. So I asked Kenneth Hyde to sign it and he said he would go ahead, but he would need this to be put on the agenda to discuss. If you all would like to talk about this in closed session, that'd be fine, but.
If we're meeting names, yes, we'll need those.
Closed session, please.
Okay, well, next on the agenda, we've got, uh, the, uh, auditor contract.
And so I didn't know there were copies, since it was lengthy, I know, I, I would have seen that, my attorney, the B God, and. The board chooses to approve it, I will send it on the L T C, make sure we get our approval so we get started. Oh, the next part of it.
I got the agenda. There, there's the packet. Is it in the packet?
No, it's in an email from, um, probably by itself, it says auditor contract. I don't, it probably been last week when I received it.
There it is, on the twenty-sixth. That's the one we reviewed in the, that special board meeting, Zach Bray?
Yes, yeah.
Yes, so we picked the auditor, we just want to approve the contract and our contract agrees with what the proposal was.
Have you had a chance to?
I have, and just on page three, um, uh, they reserve the. Right to contract with third-party service providers, of course, they secure the confidentiality, et cetera. I guess, who are these third-party service providers? Are they going to sub, sublet this, subcontract it? I guess it's never clear to me the third-party service provider, sorry. So that's page three. And then just to let you know that, um, they hold themselves harmless, um, and that's also on page three, from the risk of not detecting any material mistake or fraud. So in other words, two years from now, fraud was discovered, an investigation or something, they're not going to be, they're going to be held harmless for not finding any fraud.
Yeah.
A lot of municipalities, that's common, but I just want you to know that, that that's clearly in here. So it's still on page three, it's who are these third-party providers? Then, um, page four, I mean, it's just that lists in detail what all your responsibilities are. And, uh, they want to work with management and, and just, I think to have someone available to, to let the C P A know. That in addition to the town clerk, that, that maybe there's a, the mayor or chair or whatever is also in contact. You want someone, um, from the board to be assigned too, as to, for helping. There's a lot of material you have to get together ahead of time. So, and that's detailed about what they want waiting, not what they want, they want it before they come. So, with that said. They have a statement of their, of the hourly rate plus out-of-pocket, number at the bottom of page six. So I thought, gosh, whenever you see out-of-pocket, uh, it could be rough because you don't, you don't want to sign one for open-ended. Um, and the out-of-pocket is report reproduction, word processing, postage, travel, copies, telephone. But then it says, except that we agree that our gross fee, including expenses, will not exceed forty thousand eight seventy-five. Well, they called it out-of-pocket, so I, I think, I just want that clarified with them, because you, you don't want a surprise, turn around, out-of-pocket is, um, another forty. Yeah, yeah, it would be usually another twelve thousand or something, so. It used, in one sentence, they said out-of-pocket, then a few more sentences later, they said, including expenses, and put it, uh, at an amount. I want to know that they're one in the same. Are out-of-pocket expenses, I mean, out-of-pocket costs, that's the word, out-of-pocket costs, the same as expenses? And that is, if that is the cap. You just don't want to sign a contract that doesn't have a cap. And does that include, and again, I'm hung up on that third-party service. You're not going to be paying the third-party service, you're contracted with them, the C P A. So I would really clarify the.
Yeah, that's a little bit.
Paragraph, the last paragraph on page six, you, you need to clarify, that that is, is a cap. And then they have an email waiver that, you know, people scam emails and one of the emails from them, uh, was scanned or something, they're liable for that. So in. My, my main concern is that we're all on the same page, that page six, last paragraph, that that is the cap. And that there is any third-party service that's in there and, um, expenses means out-of-pocket costs. So just, and other than that, I mean, you're good, there are a lot of good things in here and you can check with Sonia, I mean, it's, um.
So before we sign this contract.
We have to just clarify that. Clarify the last paragraph on page six.
How soon do they need that contract signed, Sonia?
Last month. As I had mentioned to you about going up R F Ps, we have a deadline. And if we won't continue with this auditor and not our previous auditor, we have to get L G C to approve this, they will, you approve the previous arms. Yeah. R F P. And contract.
How soon can we speak with these people and then?
I think as soon as.
Get it clarified and then just.
As long as it don't exceed that amount, period. When it says don't exceed, but like you said in the previous, it says includes out-of-pocket, is that right? And this one?
It says excludes.
Excludes, yeah. We just need to make sure that that's the math on that.
And they're saying, I mean, time is of the essence, but clarifying the contract is important.
I mean, we can have another special meeting, we're having a meeting tomorrow.
Cause they can't start.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we not?
Well, no, it's going to be down. Cause it's a, it's just a work session on budget.
They're going to provide the service for the year end at June thirty, twenty twenty-two. And the main thing is, you've all got a big list of information to get together, so, I mean, they can't, you, you don't want to drag your feet, but, um.
I wish you'd have told me, Ellen, I could have reached out to them before the meeting. Cause time is in the essence on this call.
Cause this is going to go to the state and they have to approve it, yeah.
Yeah.
I understand that, but.
Okay, well, I'm going to break my reason that the attorney gives, send mayor, mayor that called the. Mayor that called these of this changes, we talked to the...
Ain't no changes, it's just clarifying the last paragraph on page six.
And then, um, we have a special meeting to vote on that.
And we could do that.
Is there any way that maybe we can get up with them right now on the phone?
Well, or approve it with the clarification that the last paragraph on page six, um, is inclusive... Or out-of-pocket expenses, or out-of-pocket costs is what they say. Inclusive of expenses and inclusive of any third-party services. That's how you're going to approve it. So it can be approved. That it's inclusive of out-of-pocket costs, use their words, expenses and any third-party service. And approve it. That this amount of forty-eight seventy-five is inclusive of those three things.
So the board could approve it on... And it would be contingent on that.
Yeah, provided that it is inclusive of those three items.
Is that what you were writing down, Brian?
No.
Oh, okay. Because I was... I thought he was too. If you let me have that, I'll read it then. Inclusive of what are the three items?
You make a motion.
I know, I was going to make a motion to approve it.
That the forty thousand eight seventy-five...
That the forty thousand eight seventy-five...
Is inclusive...
Is inclusive.
Out-of-pocket costs.
Of the out-of-pocket cost.
Expenses.
The expenses.
And any payment for third-party services.
And any of the payment for a third-party service. Make a motion that we approve it.
Say.
E. L. M.? Okay. Or you're going to contact the mayor, or me too, or Sonya, you want to come up?
Maybe we can do it right after the meeting.
Okay. Sounds good. Okay.
Today, we'll try to get that squared away.
Okay. All right. Next on the agenda, number eight, is, uh, the part-time office position. There's some ambiguity there, we know Karen resigned from her position as RTA Director, but she still has a position as the... As a fill-in for Sherri and Sonya, am I correct, Sonya? She's still a town employee in that row.
Is that something that we need to discuss in closed session too?
We're not bringing up any names, yes. But I think for me, the RTA... You have one part-time position, and that's the RTA Director. In the office. Okay. Now, you have a separate part-time position?
He was never actually hired, we put set aside money for somebody to help out in the office.
In addition to the position for the... Whoever is the RTA Director, then you have an additional mon... Money set aside for up to...
Thirty hours is what that's...
A month. Okay. So there's is another position, uh, part-time. Is that the RTA Director too?
That's how we took it to be, the...
Both of them?
Yes.
Okay. So if there was more than this needed, then you had this to fall back on, and it's still funded?
Well, we just need to make a motion to do away with that job.
Are you going to defund it?
Defund the job and do away with the job.
In the next budget? In the next budget?
In the next, yeah. The budget for the next year.
Okay, like this, really?
But now, I mean, it's a made-for position for the girls that work here.
True.
And they need somebody to fill in for them.
We can post a position to see if... In our next budget, to see if somebody is willing to come in and work part-time, when every one of them needs to be off. And we can look at that for our next budget, too.
Yeah.
Well, and that's what you would do, is look at your next budget.
But the only reason we actually done that was because one of them was out for extended time, and now it's just for whenever one of them is off. Like there was an extended illness or something during that time, is why we went ahead and set that aside so that they could have a little bit of help.
When they had that tie-in with the RTA Director?
Well, they... They made... They wanted that to be the person, they never did really... It...
It was kind of an assumed position.
Yeah, said, well, since she's here, or the RTA Director's here, why not use them? And that's... We said, well, that's fine with us, but we didn't know that we was creating another job. It was never really a position that was posted.
We talked about it in the past, but...
Yeah.
But now between both positions, RTA Director and this, does it make a full-time position?
No, because this is just a part-time, whenever type thing. It's not something that's set in stone, that they come to work and do this job, unless somebody calls out.
With less confusion, it probably needs to be completely separate.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think that's going to come with your new budget, and you need to hire your advertiser, whatever, your RTA Director.
And come up with a job description, because there's no job description for it either.
Come up with a job description and make this a separate... I mean, I... It was... It's confusing.
Yes, very.
It's confusing.
Well, that's just... We just went on what we were trying to do to help them out. We didn't realize that it created... We just assumed that we were setting nine thousand dollars over... Out of the budget so the RTA Director could get paid to help them. We never did really create a job, other than just, we created extra hours for the RTA person to...
That's funded through the town, basically.
Yeah.
Do we need to put that, like, in a job description? Or something, I mean, that... That will clarify this second job?
Mm-hmm. So since the board voted to pay her vision and dental out of the town budget, is the board going to vote to cancel that vision and dental?
Yeah. Any part-time persons, um, is canceled now, because we made that motion.
You said with the exception of who is already employed. That's why we didn't cancel anybody who's already employed.
That's why I think you should go to June thirtieth.
Okay. Go to June thirtieth.
Go to June thirtieth, and then...
Strike it all together. It's just the idea.
It takes care of that part-time. Like that is just not possible. It is, we have a...
Yes, we just created a...
So you tell them to cancel it? I don't hear it at all.
It will continue till June thirtieth, end of budget year, on that one.
Okay.
Then after that, we want to redo the whole job thing.
All right. Next up, we've got, uh, quotes for time clocks. First one we got is for... For three separate, uh, time clocks. Would be, uh, fifteen hundred, fifty-six, ninety-seven. And for the next one would be, uh... Five oh seven for three. And the next one would be... Would be, uh, two ninety-nine, ninety-six for three.
But then there's a three-hundred monthly fee with that one?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have a problem with... With, uh, with time clock, but how does that going to work with... We have on-call, well, not on-call, but people come in, so they have to all come to shop and clock in before they start work on, say, they're... The leak trap beside their house? So they have to bypass the leak and come to shop?
They come to shop anyway. On the chair.
Yeah, and if, uh, the main line breaks, and we're going away with vehicles, can't take them home for on-call employees, we still have to go to the shop and collect tools, trucks, whatever, you know? And come back, and that was...
This would be a next budget item.
Yeah.
Not necessarily those money, I would...
Oh, but we got money in the budget.
Okay.
Have you got anybody else that uses these type time clocks that you've talked to?
No, I haven't.
I'm in the post office, don't even use these. We use your typical, just...
County don't even...
Card in and clock it, it doesn't have a digital, it's...
I know the county tried it, and they got away from it. That was been years ago, I don't know if they...
The second one, I mean, it's not that big an experience, five hundred and seven dollars.
Is it limited on, uh, the amount of employees?
Do what?
I don't see any stipulation on that.
Five oh seven... Will allow maximum of fifteen employees, and that five oh seven include three time clocks, that was for the water plant, the maintenance shop, and the...
So this does away with time sheets, is this what I'm saying, what I'm hearing?
I was asked by council to bring, um, time clock clocks, and that's where I'm going with it.
She was, uh, brought to you before council.
When there had been approval that wanted to bring in?
I couldn't bear it, did it... Would it do away with time sheets? I couldn't...
Oh, she didn't say.
Anyway, with Nate Fuller.
Is there some sort of warranty?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Is what warranty comes with it?
And how do you, uh, receive the data on... Well, it says Wi-Fi, so...
From what I understand, it's five oh seven is thumb drive, and the...
Could you speak up a little bit? We're having a hard time hearing over you.
Yeah, we can barely hear you over here.
That's probably the air running a little bit.
That's a question. Um... The five oh seven looks like it's a thumb drive, and the fifteen fifty-six is Wi-Fi. Fifteen fifty-six, that's for three clocks, but there's no monthly fees in the building camera, so that's nice.
Well, the five oh seven, it says with Wi-Fi, punch cord attendance.
It does, yes. But I want to share...
I think the other one, you're paying for the camera.
I want to share about that app with Andy, boy, if you had to have the app on your phone, I suppose, or do...
I don't know.
I don't know, but either way, we're both able to function with it, and yes, it would do away with consequence, and we're just bigger and digital, but I'm hoping it's on Wi-Fi, with the... Now, I have to have people drop by the thumb drive, but either way, it's...
I'm going to recommend we table this until we can look into it a little further, figure out which one's the best option.
And it'd be good if we've had another business that uses them, so we can see how they like them, because we're taking a shot in the dark, so we don't even know how they work.
We could try... We could try one, and I could work off of both systems if you want, I could try one.
And what would be wrong with getting just your regular time card clock? Is that an option? Or is it just for the Yonza, won't we try to do away with that and have your time? I guess I have a little issue with it, because we're having to deal with stuff like that, and it's... It may save a headache, but it may also create one too, because a lot of times, those are not correct either.
Wi-Fi's going to make a big problem, because it stays out at most locations, this one's happened seven weeks going on.
And Wi-Fi is not even going to pick up at the water treatment plant in... On Long Creek, because you can't even get cell phones to work at that. I... I mean, I'm just... That's my questions about all this, is I don't want to put money into it if it's...
No.
Not going to be a... A positive thing, whereas if we're wanting time clocks, why don't we just get your...
I mean, this is a traditional one.
Just your traditional one, where you punch in and punch out.
Yeah.
That's what we usually...
Okay.
Maybe we can get a quote for that, and let's table this till our next time, and then we can...
Okay. Just the old timing.
Put it all together.
Okay. Hold on. Well, next on the agenda is, uh, camera clocks. And the first one was from, uh, Nick Burns with, uh, Potato. And for, um, a whole of eight cameras. The quote is, uh, eight thousand nine hundred fifty-nine dollars for the accidents.
And this is camera coats, quotes for what now? For inside this building or outside the building, or...
Uh, this is several different locations. The maintenance shop, the water plant.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I know the water plant would like to have Wi-Fi cameras on at the water tank sites. Is that possible? Because a lot of times, that way the operator at the plant can actually see, physically see the tank.
Yeah, man, that's a good idea.
And my plague is part of the, uh, SCADA that's...
It's a different model.
Lamar had to talk to you guys about, as far as getting...
What's the difference, Sonya?
Um, the forty-two, it doesn't scan out, and the fifty-two does, and this quote was for one for inside and outside at all four locations.
That's the one that zooms in and...
One, the fifty-two, camera fifty-two zooms out.
Yeah.
Or in, it zooms around, it gets better radius. I called Becky Garland, ask her who she uses, and so she... This is what the... The county uses, and we had Tim Sullivan, who's IT person with the county, come and talk to us about it, and, you know? It's kind of nice.
Is there something else that we can look at for our next budget?
I think so.
I mean, I think that's what we need to...
But, uh, we might want to add some more cameras if we do do it for next budget, for the... If it's possible for the water tank, but I think you have to have Wi-Fi at those sites, which would cost more money.
Yeah.
But that's simply, then, to all, leave this table to our budget meeting, uh, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Next up on the agenda would be, uh, um, Lamar's salary. Something we might want to talk about in close.
Yeah, I guess, I think we'll agree on the salary, and then we'll come out and announce it.
All right, then. Next up, uh... All right, then. Next up, Chad's wanting to address us about underground detection system.
Yes, they originally quoted a price that was twenty-three, twenty-four thousand. Twenty-four thousand dollars. Went back and they quoted again for twenty-one, and then he went back down to sixteen thousand two hundred fifty dollars. He came and done a demonstration in the parking lot, and in just a few minutes, he located almost everything that was there. And we were able to pull the lid off the wet well for the water plant, and it was directly over top of the influent pipe or effluent pipe that goes into the wet well, which shows me, I mean, it works great. Um, it will save a lot of time and a lot of money, especially if we're trying to dig a water main out in the middle of a road. We wouldn't have to dig everywhere, just to try to find it. For instance, down here at Papa Nance, when that patch was, you know, we had to pay to have that done, and that was a lot of money.
Yeah.
If we had that machine, we could cut right over top of the pipe and save.
I think it was like fourteen thousand or something like that, just to have that intersection paid.
And that was on our part, I'm, I'm pretty sure. They, they come up with a lot of the money too.
And this money is in his budget for this item.
But with a lot of unknown areas, and there's maps, and we don't have maps for most of our system. It's kinda draw-as-we-go kinda thing, outside of what my girlfriend knows. This would help us a lot.
It would protect any illegal towns too.
Yeah, we can say, if we had an area that we needed to go and find, if we had lines going that we didn't know about, we can find those.
And would it be a little bit cheaper on this? But I said there's two cases.
Um, he actually said one of the cases went up a little bit. It's one of those.
One's actually a hard, hard case.
Yeah, um, we only are gonna get the.
The LD, the second one?
I think, I think it was the cheaper case.
Yeah, it was, the one case is fifteen, and the other one's eight hundred, so. So it'd be a little bit cheaper than the sixteen.
I, I imagine.
I'm assuming so, yeah.
This was the exact price then, but, you know, that's been.
And it includes the tablet and everything?
There's no tablet.
And he sent it right to my email, what they did down there at the water plant.
Yeah, you can map things, you can, uh.
You can map it.
Hold on, drive, you can put it in, yeah, it shows that that for pipes. It, it was money.
It was. I'd say it's in the budget, purchase it. And it is in the budget.
We'll need to put that in motion.
Motion to approve the influx radar.
Say, I got it.
When, uh, when they gonna deliver it?
Uh, I'm gonna call them soon.
Okay.
Like yesterday, right?
Yeah. Yeah, looking forward to that.
It's neat.
Yeah. And, uh, next on the agenda, we need a budget amendment for some equipment that had to be purchased for the water plant.
One was the, what, the backwash valve?
Yeah, seven thousand four hundred fifteen dollars, and the Juluska valve at thirteen thousand three twenty-five.
Both, both of these quotes came up when we in our department had our budget. And I was just mentioning to them that our ARP funds will pay for equipment, or if it provides water to the people, so I was just suggesting since we already have.
That's Juluska valve, but that's the one out there by, it's regoing that one, I could get this one down here, correct?
Okay. Go ahead, son.
Yes, and you replace the one near the shop, but you haven't done this one yet.
And it needs.
So it was just my recommendation, since you already have the ARP funds seating, instead of taking out a next budget, let's just take it out of our ARP funds for the twenty thousand seven forty for the backwash valve and the Juluska valve, that both for more.
Make a motion to approve both.
Second.
Okay, ARP funds.
Using ARP funds, and I'll approve the budget amendment as well.
And that was unanimous?
Yes.
Okay. And next on the agenda, Lamar was needing some equipment for the sewer plant, but he's not here.
I'm sure he has that money in his budget.
He has the money in the budget, but we didn't have to get the money, I just thought, let's go ahead, um, since it's a move.
Yeah, he needs it, or he wouldn't be asking for it. Motion to approve.
Unanimous.
Okay. All right, next up on the agenda, town employee time for non-town functions like festivals, events, other.
Get it, that's what we talked about, that has to come from the RTA, that's what we talked about.
Yeah.
Explain that to us then.
Yeah, 'cause it's the first time I've seen it too, so.
Yeah. When have they not helped with it?
And technically, it says in here, they, they are sponsors of the event, both of everything.
But this year, the town of Robbinsville's not putting on any events or festivals or functions.
But here it says sponsors.
But if the RTA is part of the town, how is it not?
RTA has their own funds, you have your own funds. We're just trying to not to, uh, take all of this expense out of the water and sewer fund, because we hate to have people pay water and sewer bills and then use that money, you know, we use, they're overtime. It's always our employees overtime, we just need the funds to come out of the organization.
What she's asking maybe is like if they, this RTA event is to pay out of the RTA fund, that time that they spend. I guess that's what you're.
So not bill comp time, but just pay the employees? I mean, if they're an employee and they're building, if they're working.
They're not RTA employees, you're the only RTA employee. They're water and sewer employees.
Oh, mercy. So we can create a job for an RTA employee to help in the office, but then we can't use a, a Robbinsville employee to help with the events that the Robbinsville town is promoting?
Well, I mean, when Karen was working office, was she paid out the general fund then?
What's that?
When Karen worked.
Karen was paid out the general fund, we didn't pay anything from RTA, she just happened to have, you know, two positions.
Right, that's what I was saying, so we can create, we can set money aside to help with the RTA thing, but then we can't use Robbinsville employees to help with the RTA.
You can use, I mean, she just saying if, if they're, like if Chad's doing something for the RTA for two hours, just pay him out of RTA funds for that two hours.
Like Graham County festivals, they pay cash to their people who help out, you know, and the, then it would be the street dances and the, um, I guess the fishing derby, anything that the town isn't putting on. The town's not putting on any functions, we could have used our general fund, you know, employees, but we're most of the time using our water and sewer employees. And so that's gonna come out of our water and sewer bill, it's not fair. Well, as Sharon Edmondson, the North Carolina, who's second command of North Carolina treasurer, says, we need to handle it correctly.
And it says if it's not sponsored, these events, these events are sponsored, the town does sponsor these events.
Because we use the town's liability insurance to sponsor them.
Yeah. And far as the festival, we have our own insurance, but, you know, the town does sponsor.
So how long we pay for it is the question?
It would be helpful when we had questions to Sharon Edmondson, that we had all had input into the question. This is looking at the public purpose test, and she's, and she's correct, there's a public purpose test for the expenditure of your funds, okay? But we're under the, uh, an act to authorize the town of Robbinsville to levy an occupancy tax. So you have levied an occupancy tax, and this is how you distribute it. And it's in the statute, the general statutes, for the town of, for the town of Robbinsville, for any town that has an occupancy tax, uh, the distribution and administration of the tax. So the town of Robbinsville shall on a quarterly basis remit the net proceeds of the occupancy tax to the RTA. And then it says how the RTA is to spend the money. And it gives all the criteria, and it gives what you're allowed to take from the gross proceeds for administering and collecting the taxes. Um, and remember, you collect three percent of the first five hundred thousand. Of course, there's a percentage after that too, I don't think we collect more than five hundred.
So are you guys telling me that?
So you collect three percent for administering, um, the occupancy tax that you collect. And you designate a portion of that to the RTA. So we're not into the public purpose statute, we're into your occupancy tax statute. And with that said, um, and it's the same thing with that position, I think, we, you know, we've, we've got some confusions here that your RTA director was in one position, and apparently there was another position that your RTA director was in. And that's confused, was, was that paid by RTA funds, or was that paid out of your general fund?
The other position, come out, it come out of the general fund.
The two positions.
The one position, that was she worked in, she wasn't working at the RTA, come out of the general fund. The other come out of the RTA fund.
So the RTA director, the one position you had here was RTA director, when you needed her. Then you have this other physician that the RTA director was filling.
Yeah, as, as needed.
As needed, so you had your RTA director.
This is a different issue.
Yeah, I know, but I mean, I think it leads into, so someone, and, and I, I need help understanding. So do you have town employees, or you have someone, there's no RTA director right now, you'll take care of that later, okay? But someone, 'cause you're looking down the barrel, because of the events coming up, so someone has done the work. And that someone needs a requisition of how many hours and how much money, is what I'm saying. And it can be, it needs to be authorized to be paid by either the RTA funds, or let's get a little more clarity from Sharon Edmondson.
So.
Because it's your town of Robbinsville occupancy tax.
So is Graham County festivals supposed to pay our men for when they put the music on the square stuff?
That's what I read it.
Uh, their job description, from what I've always heard, was that, you tell us, Chad.
I was always told that I was to help, it's not mandatory, but I was to help any and all functions that the town hosts or are involved in, um, that's what I've always done.
Is this something that Yuns want, Yuns don't want to help with the RTA? Is that why this is being presented to us?
It's not just RTA, it's any function, we need these funds to be paid out appropriately and not other work.
But why, why is this being brought out now, that I'm needing help with a function that the town? I mean, Robbinsville Tourism Authority is a branch of the town of Robbinsville. And I'm trying to put this function on because Robbinsville Tourism Authority, and then Yuns are telling me that our maintenance men are gonna have to be paid a different way to help with the festivals that Robbinsville and Graham County is putting on?
I think what she's asking is that she just wants to be paid out of the occupancy tax, instead of the general fund, or the water supply.
Yeah, the water supply.
Yeah. If they're doing work for RTA, they'd be paid out of the occupancy tax.
So you don't, they don't bill comp time for it then? So those hours that they are working for the RTA is not overtime hours?
There would be no change, it would just come from a different fund.
It would just come from a different fund. They don't bill comp time, correct? 'Cause that's the whole thing about it, right? Is that the town is, yeah, the town is having to assume all this comp time that they're building, because they're working for the RTA and the Graham County festivals. That's how I see it. So now they need to be paid, so that's something that's gonna have to be rewritten in our policies, that if they are working for the RTA or the Graham County festivals, they are to clock in as an RTA employee.
And would, would that, that would be?
No, I mean, they're still town employees.
Correct, but I'm saying, that time has to be branched out differently, because they'll be paid out as an RTA employee whenever they clock in for those events. Because if you clock them in on this new time card clock that we're supposed to be getting, that time that they clock in for with their employee ID is going to be that they are a Robbinsville employee. They need a whole Robbinsville RTA employee ID to clock in for, or all that time that they work will be added into overtime and stuff, and it's not, from what I gathered from this.
It'll still have to be.
It is not to be built as an.
So it'd still have to be paid out overtime?
It's still overtime, they're a town.
See, that's, that's, um.
I can see the issue with Graham County, but the, the RTA, that's a town function, period.
That is a town.
Now, this, we've done, we've done agreed that we're paying our, the ones, the town employees, our contract. Basically, just to the employees, nothing to do with the town, because they only have the equipment that hauls the stage around, so. And would that be an issue, them using the town vehicle to pull the stage up to the square? If it is.
Is that gonna be an issue later? Because evidently, it's an issue now for them to help the tourism.
So I don't know.
Well, it doesn't rule out you sending money to them. Edmondson doesn't rule out the town sending money to RTA for these costs. She says that in here. If the town wants to, it could consider making a donation to help cover the cost of the events. This is a taxing.
See, the town does donate the festival, so I mean, it really don't have, but I'm just saying if it's okay to use town equipment.
Yeah, because is that gonna be an issue? Is RTA gonna be able to say, can we use the town equipment? Somebody needs to be clear with us. They've presented it to Sharon Edmondson, and they're just now putting this out here to us. Do you need to come to the RTA meeting and present that to us and let us know? Next meeting is at the end of this month, but I have a car show that, under my impression, from every year up until now, they've helped out with. Are they allowed to help us tomorrow?
Yeah, they can help.
Are they allowed to, are they allowed to put them flower things up? That's part of the town, and that's something that RTA has paid for. I mean, we took it to try to do something to.
Yeah, she's not questioning whether they can help the RTA, she's just saying that if they're, if they're working for RTA, they're paid out of the occupancy tax.
Well, that's what I'm asking too, is so do I need to try to figure out a time clock for them now, starting tomorrow or Friday?
Separate time sheet?
Do they need a separate time sheet? I mean, who, who made this to Sharon Edmondson to, why wasn't that, somebody's gotta be clear. Whoever sent this to Sharon Edmondson needs to be clear, have Sharon Edmondson to call us.
I agree.
I mean, I think it's, I think it's not right. I think they should just, if, if we need them, how many times, Chad, has the RTA made you work comp time in the past year? Have you had any comp time through RTA?
I think so, I'm not really sure which, which.
Is there a lot? He don't, see, he don't really realize which function is which.
I've been doing it for so long, as I've rested, this has already been said. I've worked here now ten years, and I've done every festival, every function that the town has been a part of, I mean, I don't really know which is what. I don't really know which was because.
What was our last one, I can't even remember.
The Christmas thing.
The Christmas thing, what did you do with it?
It's really not a time, she liked normal one. Like every time we started and when we finished.
Was it like a lot of hours?
The Christmas one?
That couple hours.
I don't think it was.
It's, it's a couple of hours at the most, that I, that most of these guys have to work.
Here's what, here's my recommendation, we're not gonna resolve it today, okay? This is a taxation.
Yep.
It's another whole chapter.
Mm-hmm.
Of the general statutes. I don't know what Sharon Edmondson is asking, but she's talking about public purpose, and there is a public purpose law. And that is, if you give to the library, you have no control in the library, that's not your bailiwick, but it's a public purpose, and you pass the public purpose test. And that's what she's addressing in here. Well, this is the Robbinsville Tourism Authority created under the authority of the Robbinsville Town Council. So you were, this is a legislative creation through a municipality. And. I'm not sure that what was asked Sharon Edmondson is the correct question, because she's using the public purpose test. And this is, um, a creation of the, um. Town of Rob, a legislative creation from, for, by the town of Robbinsville and by the General Assembly, and I have the act right here when it was created in twenty thirteen. So, um. I, I don't know that she had the right question. This isn't a public purpose, this is a legisla, legislative act authorizing the town to have a new tax. In addition to real property tax, you have, um, an occupancy tax. And this is how you, the town spends it. So I, I, I'm not looking at RTA as a public purpose, because it's a legislative creation. You just need to get through, you're looking down the barrel because you've got, not only the car show, you got the.
Fishing derby.
Yeah, well.
I mean, if I have to cancel it, I'll cancel it.
No, no, Taylor Hicks.
Yeah, actually the band and myself has taken that.
Just to get through until, um, the proper question is that. Get everyone paid, there are lots of people who have burned the midnight oil because there's no RTA director. Get those people paid, do it out of RTA, and the town send money to RTA that they run out of. Because that's even authorized in this.
That midnight oil will start Friday, keep up with your time, nobody has put anything into anything.
Okay, so just keep up, get everyone paid, this is not the time for this screw-up thing to happen.
No, it wasn't, it really wasn't.
It's okay, get everyone paid, send the money to RTA.
That's ridiculous. That is ridiculous.
Can I have another question? Can, even though the festival's contracted with the town employee maintenance, can they use the maintenance equipment? Or is that gonna be an issue?
It's authorized by the municipality, I wouldn't change gears now.
What's authorized by the municipality?
The RTA. It's a creation, it's a legislative creation for the town of Robbinsville.
On the festival's behalf of us, 'cause we contract our workers. We contract the maintenance workers to work for us. We, we started at, where me and Sonia talked about it last year, and I told her we was gonna do it this year, and then this come about, so I don't know what's going on. But anyway, I just wanna make sure that it's, that they can use the town vehicle to pull a stage up there, if not, then we just won't have no stage bleachers. That's what I'm asking.
Then I think you should call your insurance carrier. That you're gonna pull it for the RTA and uncover us and do anything else.
As the alderman for this town, are we not allowed to go ahead and make these what we want done and what we need done without asking Sharon Edmondson?
Something's come up here, you don't know the full story, you don't know what's going on, but we gotta stay focused and not be. Until we get the full picture.
Yeah, I'll, I'm staying focused.
Well, I meant, until we get the full picture of why all of a sudden.
Yeah.
That, um, we're out of an entity. That a legislative entity regulated by the municipality suddenly can't do certain things. So until we get to, until we get it clarified, you gotta persevere.
I don't think she's saying that they can't do something, she's just gonna get paid out of appropriate fund balance, I'm guessing.
She's trying to lower the water and sewer bill.
That has nothing to do with lowering water and sewer bill.
It's a hundred percent about water and sewer, you're using water and sewer bill.
It's not.
Employees' time.
That has nothing to do with that.
And you can get through it if you pay someone to pull, um, you send the liability.
According to our personnel policy, as long as it's authorized by the mayor or council, they can use town equipment. I do know that.
And you're gonna pay the people, and you're gonna send them?
Well, far as Graham County Festival, yes, we pay our workers, we are, we're starting out this year.
Yeah, yeah. And if RTA needs more money, send it to them. Based on whatever question she got, she's saying you can send money. And then we'll work back through.
Maybe it can be nine thousand dollars.
Yeah.
For a job that was once created.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, um, number sixteen, Sonia wanted to. Address us about paying off a sanitary sewer loan?
Several years ago, we were able to pay off one of our debts, we were at three point, uh, three million dollars in debt with our water and sewer funding, so. We want to try to, as to gradually pay that down if we can, I'd like to make a recommendation since, um, the sewer plant didn't have any extravagant issues this year. And we're doing good financially, that we go ahead and pay off this sanitary sewer balance, um, um. We will be paying out sixty-nine thousand seven hundred sixty-eight, and we'll be saving in our ten years worth of interest, fifteen thousand three hundred fifty. The way the budget works is it doesn't roll over and you just get to continue to use it, the money goes into the savings account and you use it for emergencies. So if you have put ten thousand dollars for a festival and you didn't have that festival that year, it don't roll over for the next year, it goes into the fund balance. And my recommendation is since we're gonna be putting this money into the savings anyway, because we have an excess this year, is to just pay that debt off and save the, um, interest.
Okay, it says sixty-nine seven sixty-seven, but on the paper it's seventy-six seven forty-four.
Because we make payments, that's just.
Okay, we've already made a payment.
We made our payments.
Okay. If we can eliminate one of our debts, I'm all for it.
Make a motion to, um, pay this debt of sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight off and amend the budget with amendment number fifteen.
Second.
All right, Jim, uh, we got closed session, we got personnel to discuss? Oh, yeah.
Number nineteen, yeah, and it's just, uh. Uh, we've set aside five thousand for Graham County, for, for festivals, and in, uh, Music on the Square, which is four thousand, so nine thousand, it's in the budget. And, uh, you know, and the town's sponsored both events. So I'm not sure we have to have a motion, 'cause it's in the budget, we're just, I'm just bringing it, let you know, I think, do we need a motion on this? Sean?
Uh, probably, yeah.
Give it a mind, give it a money, yeah.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the nine thousand dollars for the allocation to the Graham County Festivals.
I'll say it.
Unanimous.
And, uh, you got personnel matters to discuss some things?
Yeah, yeah, we got some personnel issues.
Okay.
Uh, motion for closed session, preservation attorney client clear, pursuant provision of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen. Eleven A, three, and one forty-three, three thirteen, eleven C. Move town, Robinsons of Town Council, go into closed session, receive advice from your male and dated attorney for the town of Robinsons of Town Council, which advice comes. Per view of attorney client proof, this advice will be given, general legal advice about legal issues and matters, and personal, personnel motion, personal pursuit of North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven C. I move the town Robinsons of Town Council, go into closed session with a purpose considering personal matter, personnel matters as defined in and allowed by North Carolina General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A. Six, and North Carolina General Statute one sixty-eight dash, one sixty-eight?
Second.
That was a mouthful.
Twelve hundred two.
Yeah.
So giving the title of my.
Yeah.
An increase.
Yeah.
Twelve dollars.
And two cents on that one.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that, uh, Lamar Williams' salary be increased by twelve dollars and two cents for his new position being able to see over the water plant.
On the hour.
On the hour.
Second, oh, unanimous.
No further business?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Second.
Unanimous. Unanimous.